Good evening. Welcome to the February 15th School Board Special Board Meeting. Please join me in rise for the pleasure of allegiance. First off, Student Rep. Kaitlin Badney is excused. Also Lori Rothaus is going to participate via conference call. The meetings will proceed following RSA 91-A:2, which states that all parties must contemporaneously be able to hear and speak to each other. The meeting should be audible, all persons present must be identified, and all votes must be taken by roll call vote. Board Member Rothaus, why is your attendance not reasonably practical?
I am outside of Orlando, Florida. I am a Division One rep for the National Federation of High School Sports Rules Committee, and I am not in the presence of anyone.
Would you repeat that, please? I'm so sorry.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, would you repeat it? Repeat, "Why is your attendance not reasonably practical?"
Because I'm in Florida.
Thank you. And are you in the presence of anyone?
No, I am not.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. Now we will move to public participation. We have 15 minutes allotted for public participation. We're going to keep the meeting on track. So what we will do is what we've done in other recent meetings is we will open it up to someone on the floor here, live, and then we will go to any emails that we have, and we will then resume our public portion, the business portion of our meeting, and then we will open it up at the end again for more public comments if needed. So I will go ahead and open up the public participation to the live attendees here. And just remember to state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name's Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. With the masking policy on the agenda again, that has been unfortunately such an emotionally charged topic. I wanted to be here in person to give my thanks to the board. And while I appreciate and I'm proud of all the participation that our Meramec community has given to not just this topic, but to the school board meetings this year. The discussions have, of course, at times gotten heated, and our board members have acted professionally, and I admire and respect that and appreciate it. I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to thank the work of the Health and Safety Task Force, as well as our board members for all of the thought, the effort, the research that has gone into creating these policies while prioritizing the health and safety of our children, our teachers, and our entire school community. I know it hasn't been easy. I know not all of the policies that have come to fruition have been maybe even what I initially envisioned, but I appreciate sincerely the thought, the targeted approach, and the ability to find nuances and compromise while you maintain that priority of our students and of our school community. So, thank you very much. I continue to support the work that the Health and Safety Task Force does. I appreciate all of you for listening to them, and I only ask that going forward, we continue to keep in mind those high-risk members of our school community, either themselves or their family members, and those who are still too young to be vaccinated. But through all of this, that has been completely unprecedented. You have all done more than you should be expected to, and it's truly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
Lisa Mongovan, 14 Lambs and Drive. Another our school board is deciding to make masks optional for all our districts starting tomorrow. I think everyone knows that all members will likely vote in favor of this decision as cases throughout the state continue to drop, which is such a great thing to see, those cases dropped, that is. I would simply like to reach out to the school board and remind all of you that we have children in all three of our elementary schools who still remain unvaccinated in our MEEP preschool program. These children are ineligible for vaccination as of now. God willing, the FDA and CDC will approve the vaccine for five and younger mid-April. I had hopes my four-year-old would be able to be vaccinated at the end of this month, but more data was needed for this age group. Just please bear in mind, as you make your decision tonight, that not all children in our district have been eligible for vaccination yet and are still left vulnerable. Thank you, Lisa Mongovan.
Next up?
Sheena DeBork, Belmont Drive. So 36 days ago, it was on January 10th, I sent an email to Bill Olson asking for information regarding the COVID tracking spreadsheet on the SAU 26 website, and I've yet to receive a response to that email 36 days later. 28 days ago, on January 18th, I emailed the school board, specifically asking what data was used to determine a two-week timeframe of under the 5% threshold of COVID cases in a school. And I still, 28 days later, have not received a response. Then on January 25th, 21 days ago, I emailed Bill directly again, asking for an answer to my question. Still no response. And I'm not sure if all emails sent to the board and the super are ignored, but my last three emails have been. So I would presume that other parents and taxpayers' emails are also possibly ignored. Maybe it's just mine, but in any case, I'll go ahead and send that again this evening so that everyone has it, and maybe I can get an answer. And if I don't receive an answer, I'll continue to send the email until I get an answer. Study after study has shown that masks do nothing to slow the spread of the COVID-19 virus. It's clear as day on the CDC website that cloth masks are not statistically significant in lowering the odds of testing positive. The mask theater has been serving only to make people feel better. I'm extremely grateful that you're finally removing the mask mandate for everyone, as this is well overdue, but still you're recommending this arbitrary caveat of mandatory masking for a full two weeks if cases exceed 5% for one day. So I have two huge problems. Bill stated that two to three days does not constitute a trend, but you're willing to use one day at 5% on one side, and then 14 days below 5% on the other side. I don't see how you can have it both ways. If you're looking at a trend, one day is not a trend, as Bill has already stated. So to put it simply, if the cases hit 5% for five days, then you should have five days of masking, logically speaking, if you want to go by trends. My second huge problem is that you still believe you have the right to force the children of this community to wear a medical device on their faces against their parents' will, completely disregarding the children's moral right to his or her own bodily autonomy and integrity. Why are we continuing to cater to this nonsense? There is no data to show any benefit to masking. You have yet to provide any information as to what data you are using to justify implementing this policy. So again, I ask, and the taxpayers deserve an answer. What data are you using? Thank you.
Shannon?
Jennifer Jobin, Mary Meeting Drive. Dear Members of the School Board, thank you for relying on data and science consulting the Health and Safety Task Force for guidance on masks and for listening to residents' concerns throughout the pandemic. I appreciate that the suggested provisions to use the mask policy include plans to return to a mask requirement if positive COVID cases reach 5% or greater, and that it is noted that this policy may again be updated based on future COVID data. I know we all hope that numbers continue to trend downward, but it's good that those items are included. While the current variant has been shown to be fairly mild for most children, we still have students in our district who may be at higher risk for COVID complications and are therefore more comfortable continuing to wear a mask. If the outcome of this meeting is to adopt the proposed policy changes, then I ask you to please make it clear that intimidation of students who choose to continue to wear masks will not be tolerated. While I expect that students will respect each other's choices, I do see how the potential for bullying regarding masks could exist. A clear message from the school board and administration will help to ensure a smooth transition to the updated policy. Thank you, Jennifer Jobin.
Thank you. I'll open it up back up the floor. Anyone? Okay, any other?
Emails are done.
All right, so we will go ahead and move on to item number three, which is old business. The first item is the Use of Masks by Students and Staff Policy.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I still have a case of laryngitis, so I'll take my mask off while I speak. First of all, thank you for scheduling a special school committee meeting. Last week, I had a meeting with the school nurses, and they were very much in favor of us taking a different tact with the masking policy. As you know, about eight months ago, the Health and Safety Task Committee was formed to help keep our students and our staff as safe as possible. With the reopening of school, they have done an outstanding job. At this present time, the Health and Safety Task Committee has preferred that the nurses provide guidance from this point on, that the comprehensive nature of the Health and Safety Task Force work in terms of the reopening plan, which considered a number of mitigation factors, strategic and logistical issues, that work is pretty much in the past. And the nurses have done an outstanding job in participating in the Health and Safety Task Force and are now prepared to provide advice to myself and therefore to you in terms of where we go. As you know, we've been guided by data. That data comes from both the state and from our direct observations of numbers of students and numbers of staff that have tested positive, who are in isolation, who are on quarantine. And so we've tried to keep you up to date and base our decisions to you, base our recommendations, excuse me, to you, upon which to make decisions. And so tonight, based on my meeting last week with the nurses, I'm going to recommend to you that we immediately change to a mask optional policy. It benefits everyone, in that those who no longer wish to wear a mask don't have to. Those who wish to for an extra measure of safety, given their own personal circumstance, are certainly allowed to do so also. I do want to make a couple of points clear, though, with respect to the policy. First of all, masks will still be required to be worn on buses. That is a CDC mandate, a federal mandate. We don't have any choice on that. Secondly, those students who attend CTE programs, Career Technical Education programs, that are Meramec students but attend other locations such as Nashua, they will have to follow, while they are in those respective communities, they will have to follow their respective mask policies. Nashua is still under a mandatory mask policy. So whatever students we have, once they enter the Nashua Public Schools, they will have to be masked, okay? That is not up to us. That is up to the other community. We do have still the 5% provision in the mask policy that the nurses have strongly recommended to me, and I'm recommending to you also, because we don't want to see things get out of hand. We're hoping that this current trend continues. Numbers have dropped considerably nationwide, statewide, and locally over the last month. And so I'm glad to be able to make this recommendation to you with the caveat, once again, that students will have to wear the masks on buses and that those who attend Career Technical Ed programs in other communities that might require masking will have to be masked. Those who attend, those residents who attend sports events during the evening, late afternoon, weekends, we will have an optional masking policy at that time, at those times also. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. I think I included some supportive data by the school nurses, which is quite compelling. They have been outstanding to work with. They have been outstanding in working with families, individual phone calls, individual consultations, individual guidance with families to help students come back and come back safely. I do want to say that with now the five-day isolation quarantine period, once a student returns for days six through 10, or a staff member, they will have to be masked, okay? That has not changed. So I do want to make that clear, that we will continue to abide by the revised isolation and quarantine period from the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, which is five days. But return, the return of in days six through 10, the DHHS has stipulated that students and staff who come back from six through 10 days have to be masked. Otherwise, they have to continue through the 10-day isolation and quarantine period. So I'm hoping you will approve it. If so, it will go into effect tomorrow. One of the reasons that I asked you to have a meeting tonight, and I appreciate, once again, you holding this meeting, is that I didn't see, nor did the nurses see, any worth or any value in waiting another week when the data trends have been consistently downward, and it's time. It's time to make a change, we've always said. When the data was increasing, in terms of the increase in transmission rates and numbers, we would adjust our policy accordingly. We also said we would adjust it accordingly if the data indicated that we had a consistent trend downward. So that's my recommendation to you, and I hope that you will act on it, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Bill. And I just wanted to echo the thanks to the board and to Board Member Rothaus, who's not here to attend this special meeting. It's, you know, never ideal to call a special meeting and have to attend, but this issue has been important enough to the community, and we didn't grant any leeway with administration to be able to make pivotal decisions. And so I agreed with the desire to have the special meeting tonight so that we wouldn't hold off any decisions for another week, as it does impact our student body and it also impacts our staff. And so, again, I really thank you for taking the time this week to be able to meet for the special meeting. I will open it up to any questions or feedback regarding the proposed mask policy or any others. Shannon?
Couple of questions. The first is, we do really have a good grasp. I know that we're not doing the same tracking with cases. I understand that if you take a home case, you don't have to report to the state anymore.
You report once a week.
Yeah, so with that, lesser cases, so we don't have as close of tracking either. So when we talk about this policy, I think it's driven as well into that we're not going to get real-time data to get real-time results. So some of that makes sense to me. What was important to me, and when I did the opt-out policy, was that we had parents' intentions on record, and we had a specific position. And if someone did not want that position, they had the option to take the less-recommended position, but we knew what that decision was. We don't, if we just have optional. And so when we talk about parents' wishes, we really aren't going to know unless it's communicated through the student themselves and, you know, what they tell us. So that's the only hesitation I have, is we talk about parents making the decision. Well, we don't know what that is anymore with truly optional. So I would have liked to have something that would be a little more firm to be on record about what that would be. Again, I don't think we really have a grasp on real-time cases as it is, so I don't know how you're going to manage that day-to-day. But I definitely wish that there was more need around the decision-making. And then furthermore, I would say that when it comes down to it, how do we accommodate for our medically sensitive students or students that are going home to medically sensitive households? I don't know that I understand exactly how they will be able to opt their, you know, students to get an environment they feel is safe for them if we don't have what we would call structured language around what, you know, basically what's expected in the classroom environment going forward.
Shannon, may I just, one of your questions was, we don't have a handle on real-time tracking. That data was tracked every day by the school nurses and is entered into the spreadsheet on our website, on our district website. It's just that the state has dropped its requirement of daily reporting and is now only requiring weekly reporting. But our reporting internally is every single day. So we have a handle on how many cases are positive between students and staff each day of the week.
And then when it comes to those who take a home test, are they required to report?
They're not required to report. We encourage them to report, but not required.
But that's why I'm saying the data is only as good as the information you have. So I just want, I want to kind of feed that conversation as well.
I will say that, and I do want to thank our staff, our students, and our families also, because they've been wonderful in being responsible and not sending the children to school with symptoms. They've communicated with the school thoroughly. It really has been a very encouraging community effort to keep the students safe, to keep our staff safe. And when you talk about the uncertainty of a reporting of test results, we understand that. We've talked about that for a while, and that's always a possibility. But I have great faith in the fact that our parents have done the right thing so far in this community, and will continue to do the right thing.
Jenna?
So I just want to say thank you again for all the hard work you've done. It's been a long, it predates you even, but a couple of years with all of this, you know, tracking and all of this data and trying to figure out what to do and what's the best and most prudent way forward. I think that, I love that the Health and Safety Task Force was kind of turned over to the nurses. It seemed like the right time for that. And I'm thrilled that this was their recommendation. I mean, all along, I don't think even those of us that have voted at times to say there needed to be a mask mandate, none of us really love masks or want our kids wearing masks or want to be wearing masks ourselves. But we felt a responsibility to protect the entire community from, you know, we felt a responsibility to do what we could do to protect kids in our district until they were vaccinated, until they all, everyone had the opportunity to be vaccinated. And I think I'm certainly a person that has said all along, once we hit that point, I feel like the responsibility shifts away from the school district taking the responsibility for making sure everybody is protected, to specifically transfer directly onto families. Once everybody has the ability to protect themselves, then families can decide if they need to do extra measures beyond that. You know, if you want to vaccinate your child, if you want to have them wear a mask. At that point, you know, once we knew everybody had the option to protect themselves with a vaccine, that I would feel differently, and I do. I'm in support of this for that reason, because I feel like the responsibility for that does shift. And for those who are medically sensitive, they will have to decide for themselves what is the best way to move forward. And what I know about teachers in general and of the teachers in this district in specific is that they will do everything they can, you know, as parents communicate with them to act in the best interest of each individual student. So I'm grateful, I'm grateful that this is the direction we're moving, and I think this is the right time.
Lori Peters?
Echoing what Jenna said, I do believe it's the right time. We went from over 850 cases in Meramec just a month ago down to 44 today. Yes, there's going to be unreported cases because of the home tests, but we've had that thankfully for about six months. But we see that trend in our community, and I do think it's the right time. The only part of the policy that I'm hesitant on for the long haul is the 5%, only because I think the day is going to come where we need to drop even that piece of it. The CDC and the scientists are telling us that this is going to become endemic like the seasonal flu. And at that point, we need to treat it just like we treat seasonal flu and strep and all the, you know, pink eye and all the other things our kids get in school, and remove that. It is too soon tonight, I agree, because we just now, literally in a month, things have changed. But looking forward down the road, I think we need to revisit that section of the policy, depending, again, on what the data is demonstrating, where we are at three months from now, six months from now, when we're headed back to school again. And I, again, I love that the nurses are going to take on that burden. They're the ones on the calls with the state. They're the ones with the medical knowledge. But I want to thank the Health and Safety Task Force, what an enormous burden they have had for all of this time. And on top of everything that they already do day-to-day, I want to express my thanks and gratitude for their hard work.
I'd just say thank you to all of you for recognizing the task force work. Our discussions have not always been easy. We have not always agreed on things, but we've always been very respectful to each other and always guided by the best interest of the health and safety of students and staff. And the nurses felt strongly, Lori, about the fact that for the short term, that 5% factor is the best thing to keep in the policy, with the understanding that it may be deleted down the road.
Thank you. Lori Rothaus, is there anything that you wanted to add or any questions?
I'm all set. I agree with Lori Peters.
And I just wanted to say, you know, thanks again. And I think that all along, you know, as we've gone through, you know, a very challenging time, you know, as a district and as a country and a world, I think it's always been known that, you know, the idea is we need to transition and we need to be able to be smart about when we make those changes. And certainly, you know, I think now is the right time with the numbers that have decreased. I mean, COVID is still here, it's still around. But at this point, you know, I totally support the decision of the Health and Safety Task Force. And I think certainly, you know, being able to bring in some options, you know, we've had the ability for students to, you know, opt out. So in some respect, there's been some type of an optional component. But this also brings that optional component to those that work with our students and staff, I mean, students, and that would be our staff and teachers and administrators. So, you know, this just allows them a little more flexibility and hopefully, you know, we'll continue to see numbers going down. That's what we all want, and we all want to get back to normal. And slowly but surely, we're getting there, so thanks again. That's all. Oh, I had another, one other thing I wanted to say. In the public comments, you know, a woman did talk about the possibility of bullying, you know, as it relates, you know, to maybe people wearing a mask. But I also think that bullying can go the other way to people not wearing masks. And so I guess what I would like is, you know, we do have our, you know, we have burn Sidon, and, you know, there may be some good interventions that, you know, we could continue to reinforce about people's decisions and, you know, be able to get some messaging out to our students as well so that we don't have bullying going either way regarding a family's decision. Whatever that decision might be, people should be respected.
We will have those conversations.
All right. Shannon?
So under these circumstances, I move that we rescind the current mask policy dated October 18th, 2021, and approve the revised mask policy that's dated today, February 15th, 2022.
Do I have a second for that? Lori Peters made the second. Any additional discussion that anyone wants to make? Okay, because Lori Rothaus is off, we need to do a roll call vote. So Lori Rothaus, how do you vote?
In favor.
Shannon Barnes?
In favor.
Jenna Hardy?
In favor.
Lori Peters?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. That motion on the table carries 5-0-0. So I think that that brings us through all of the old business that we were planning to discuss at this special meeting tonight. I will open it up again for public comments. We will take the same protocols. We'll start with anyone that's here that wishes to speak. Whoever does, just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. Just real quick, in the interest of time, thank you for your thoughts. Thank you for sharing them and the transparency that this board has taken in the masking policy. And thank you for the consideration of the social and emotional And thank you for the consideration of the social and emotional well-being of our students. Fern has been an amazing asset and resource for our students and our parents. I've taken advantage of a number of her programs. So I appreciate the thought that all students from all families, regardless of their choice, moving forward on this topic, not be subject to any bullying, and that we are addressing any anxiety or feelings they might have. So thank you again for taking into consideration that social emotional part, because it is critical to have children in a good space to be able to receive the education that our amazing staff provides. Thank you.
Brian Townsend, Mary Meeting Drive. Dear Merrimack School Board members, I appreciate Board Member Barnes's question regarding the opt-out form in order for teachers to know parents' wishes, especially when it comes to our elementary population. I would support an opt-out and not optional mask policy for this reason. Thank you, Brian Townsend.
Any other comments from the room here?
Hi, Erin Pagan, thirty-three Mallard Point. This is all I wanted, just a choice, a choice that I think is the best option for my kids. And I know that this has been really hard on everybody, and I just want to say thank you for giving us the choice. The only other thing I want to say, and I really just want to make this about the staff tonight, a year ago, I had spoken to a staff member in this district, and she said, "As soon as the vaccine becomes available, I'm going to be the first in line so that we can get the vaccine and go back to normal." And that was a year ago that she said that to me. And how selfless of her, right, to just jump in that line to get that vaccine to make sure that these kids can get back to some sort of normalcy. Although it took a little longer, I really think that the staff just needs to be put on some sort of a pedestal. I mean, they I think our kids have always had the option. We've always opted our kids out. The staff has never had that option, and they continuously push forward every single day. They've never been given that choice to opt out. And so I am so more excited for the staff than I am for the students because the staff deserve it more than anybody that I know. So I really appreciate that we've taken the staff into consideration, and I hope that any staff member that wants to take the mask off can go in tomorrow and have the best day ever. So, thank you.
Shannon?
There are no more public comments.
May I just say one thing?
Sure.
Erin, thank you for making that comment, because the staff has been extraordinary. And when this information became public, I can't tell you how many comments I received today from people saying, "We just want to see smiles again." And that, so tomorrow will be kind of the dawning of a new day, hopefully, always moving forward, you know, with this pandemic. So hopefully, good news from here on in, and nothing but smiles from here on in.
All right, Kathy?
Hi, Kathy Comar, Belmont Drive. I agree with you. There's probably going to be a lot of tears tomorrow, and there will probably be a lot of cheering from the kids. I don't know if you guys have seen any of the videos that have been going around about other districts that have gotten rid of the masks. The kids are elated, over the moon, screaming, yelling, jumping around, because they don't have to have it on their face anymore. I don't know who it was that said it about the bullying with the masks. Whoever said the point, Cinda, when you had made the point about kids that don't want to wear masks now, thank you for bringing up the fact that they're going to get bullied, because I know a lot of kids that are in the opt-out, and they get tormented. It's actually been said to my child, "You're going to kill me. Put it on your face. You're going to kill my family." I don't need my kid coming home telling me that somebody is saying that to her. So please reiterate the fact to students that are paranoid or whatever the case is, you make your choice in what's best for you and your family. We've made our choice for what's best for us and our family, and I really don't want to hear about my child coming home and saying something like that to me, because I didn't say anything the first time or the second time. It happens again. I will be coming back to the board about it. So let's just make sure it's a playing, even playing field for all the kids. Thanks.
Any more, Shannon?
Still none.
All right, any other comments? Okay, going once.
Make a motion to adjourn if that's okay.
Yes, make a motion to adjourn by Shannon.
Yeah.
Second by Jenna. Lori Peters, how do you vote?
In favor.
Jenna Hardy?
In favor.
Shannon Barnes?
In favor.
And Lori Rothaus?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. That carries five zero zero. Thank you all, and have a good night.